Mayor, we can't hear you.
Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you. I was having a great meeting. I'd like to invite you guys to join me. Let me just restate that and welcome everyone to the October the 19th Mesa City Council Meeting. Our council is present with the exception of Mr. Whitaker who is excused. At this council meeting, we are taking comments both over the telephone and the Internet. You can find multiple ways to participate on the first page of the council agenda. Additionally, if you want to speak, please submit a blue card one hour before the meeting. Again, you can find that information on the first page of the agenda for this meeting and at mesaaz.gov/BlueCard. We will begin our meeting this evening with a moment of silence for the victims in our community that were involved in the last Friday's shooting. Following that moment of silence, we'll invite Pastor Nate Boyd from Christ Church of the Valley to offer an invocation for this meeting, after which we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. So, please join me in standing for a moment of silence followed by the prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Pastor Boyd. Would you please proceed?
Yes, Mayor, thank you so much. Join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for every seat that has been filled during this meeting. And God, we pray for the hearts and minds of the leaders in this room and also for our great city. Only you truly know what we are setting out here to accomplish today, God. And Lord, we ask that your righteousness transcends our efforts in understanding and that your greatness snuffs out any pride that threatens to unqualify us. Please strengthen our confidence in you, you who have made us to be who you have made us to be. Bless this meeting today and all those who are present, as well as the lives of those who we will encounter. We pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Boyd. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our- All right, thank you again, and thank you for your moment of silence at the beginning of this meeting. We noted in our study session a moment ago, the tragedy that occurred last Friday, and again, we'll keep the community updated as the situation evolves and offer, again, our condolences to the families and the victims, and we will look for opportunities to support those families in the upcoming days and weeks. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is awards and recognitions. We have one item on the awards and recognitions agenda tonight, and it's to proclaim October of this year as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. During this month, we reaffirm our dedication to building a community where no one suffers the hurt and hardship that domestic violence causes and to recommit to uphold the basic human right to be free from violence and abuse. Here tonight to share more about Domestic Violence Awareness Month is City Prosecutor John Bellotti. John?
Thank you, Mayor. And as the city prosecutor and on behalf of the Mesa Prosecutor's Office and the City Attorney's Office, I really want to thank you and accept the proclamation supporting victims and survivors of domestic violence. This proclamation really reaffirms the City of Mesa's commitment to serving justice to victims of such violence and holding offenders accountable for it as well. So, we're very grateful for this proclamation. What you and the council are doing, Mayor Giles, is helping spread awareness of domestic violence in our community, and you're actually inspiring action by those of us on this side to help fight domestic violence. So, we really appreciate that commitment. In that regard, I wanted to make sure that I don't forget to announce that our office, along with the Mesa Police Department and the Mesa Family Advocacy Center, is hosting a domestic violence awareness event this Thursday night, October 22nd at 6:30 PM. It's going to broadcast live on Channel 11. This virtual event is going to feature Mayor Giles himself, domestic violence survivors, some educational providers on domestic violence, and it's going to end with a candlelight commemoration. So, hopefully, everybody who is interested can tune into this event. Again, it's this Thursday, October 22nd at 6:30 PM on Channel 11. It's also going to stream on the City of Mesa 11 YouTube channel. So, with that, Mayor, thank you very much. Thank you to the council for issuing this proclamation. I am tremendously proud to accept the proclamation on behalf of everyone who is working to prevent domestic violence in the City of Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and thank you for the great work of the City Prosecutor's Office and the Police Department. I'm looking forward to joining you in that event on Thursday, and again, very proud to add our support in proclaiming this Domestic Violence Awareness Month and to work on it every month of the year. But, thank you again. The next item on our agenda, council, is to take action on the consent agenda. We'll invite Mr. Kevin Christopher forward to read the consent agenda for the council.
Pinch hitting for Kevin Christopher is Randy Pollock.
Thank you, Randy.
Sorry about that, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on one-year renewal with one-year renewal option to the term contract for print shop paper for the Business Services Department. Item 3B, act on dollar limit increase to the term contract for legal process services for the photo safety program. Item 3C, act on one-year renewal with a one-year renewal option to the term contract for open data platform solution for the Department of Innovation and Technology. Item 3D, act on purchase of an annual subscription of a law enforcement web-based training platform. Item 3E, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for communications tower service for the Department of Innovation and Technology. Item 3F, act on one-year term contract for Altech equipment service, repair, and parts for the Fleet Services Department. Item 3G, act on purchase of one medium-duty aerial bucket truck and service body for the Transportation Department as requested by the Fleet Services Department. Item 3H, act on eight-month term contract with three years of renewal options for in-vehicle routers for medical response vehicles for the Mesa Fire Medical Department. Item 4A, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to accept a $130,000 grand award from the National Recreation and Park Association to enhance the playground renovation at Palo Verde Park. Item 4B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for grant funds up to $206,000 for equipment and training for the Mesa Fire Medical Department's Rapid Response Team. Item 4C, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for grant funds up to $87,700 for equipment and training for the Mesa Fire Medical Department's Prevention Threat Liaison Officer. Item 4D, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a highway safety contract with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety to accept $123,569 in grant funds. These funds will be used by the Police Department's Traffic Division for overtime, employee-related expenses, materials, and supplies for DUI impaired driving enforcement. Item 4E, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a highway safety contract with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety to accept $86,218 in grant funds. These funds will be used by the Police Department's Traffic Division for overtime, employee-related expenses, materials, and supplies for the Selective Traffic Enforcement Program. Item 4F, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a highway safety contract with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety to accept $33,262 in grant funds. These funds will be used by the Police Department's Traffic Division for overtime, employee-related expenses, materials, and supplies for pedestrian and bicycle safety. Item 4G, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year intergovernmental agreement with the Mesa Unified School District Number Four to accept up to $1,417,809 annually for salary and benefits for Mesa Police School Resource Officers assigned to 12 Mesa Public Schools, working under the Department of Education's School Safety Program. Item 4H, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the Arizona Department of Public Safety to accept $1,493,064 in Victims of Crime Act Grant Funds. The funding will be used for salaries and expenses for the Mesa Prosecutor's Office's Victim Services Unit for a three-year period. Item 4I, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Queen Creek concerning pavement preservation activities at the intersection of Jermaine and Sausman Roads. Item 4J, act on resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, Series 2020, not to exceed $22,750,000. Item 4K, act on resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020, not to exceed $31,000,000. Item 4L, act on resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of utility systems revenue bonds, Series 2020, not to exceed $85,275,000. Item 4M, act on resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of utility systems revenue refunding bonds, Series 2020, not to exceed $47,000,000. Item 5A, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 19-00709 for property within the 8,500 to 8,700 blocks of East Pecos Road located west of Ellsworth Road on the south side of Pecos Road. Rezone and site plan reviewed to allow for an industrial development on the property. Item 6A has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 6B, act on ordinance regarding ZON 20-00377 for property within the 3,500 block of East Brown Road and the 1,200 block of North Val Vista Drive, located at the northwest corner of Brown Road and Val Vista Drive. Rezone to allow for the development of a medical and professional office building in use. Item 7A, act on subdivision plot, Baywood Square Replant located west of Sausman Road on the south side of University Drive. Item 7B, act on subdivision plant, East Ridge Manor, located south of Guadalupe Road and east of Hoss Road. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Pollock. Ms. Mickelson, have there been any blue cards submitted for an item on the consent agenda?
No requests, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda? Thank you, motion by Mr. Luna, seconded by Council by Vice Mayor, Mr. Freeman. We'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Reddya?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. I vote aye as well. The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Whitaker excused. The next item on our agenda is item 6A. This is a zoning case, case 20-283 for property located at the northeast corner of Recor Road and Baseline Road. This is to rezone the property from Ag to RM2PAD and site plan review. This request will allow for a townhome development on the property. Ms. Mickelson, I know we have requests to speak on this item. Would you please read the blue cards and also introduce the residents that want to speak on this item?
Okay, Mayor, the first speaker, and he is on the phone, is Russell Kennedy.
Thank you. Please, please proceed, Mr. Kennedy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy, we hear you. Please go ahead.
City councilmen, mayors, thank you so mu- Mayor, thank you so much for the opportunity and the time to speak to you this evening on this matter. I'm a long-term resident of Mesa, and I'm sure you're going to hear a lot of other people speak at this meeting that can oppose this rezoning in several different ways. I've written my objections. I've sent them out in emails. They've been previously made in the planning and zoning meetings. But, I'd like to also object to the process that has been had with this redevelopment. Besides the long-term impact that's going to be had on this community that is very, very real, and the consequential damages that are going to be had on this, on this, I feel very upset about the way that this process went. There's a sign posted now out in front of the property that's going to be redeveloped. It doesn't say a word about this being a virtual meeting or the planning and zoning meeting being virtual. It wasn't until we submitted comment cards or objections that we got a response back individually from the planning and zoning staff to say that this is a virtual meeting. I had every intention of showing up in person and being at that meeting and realized that I probably would have been spun on my heels and been unable to take part in that. Why couldn't that sign have been listed that this was a virtual meeting? Despite it being a virtual meeting, you have to imagine our surprise when we log in and watch the video and see the attorney for the developer sitting there, live and in person, front and center, and given unfettered access to the staff, given unlimited time to plead his case, where we only got a few minutes, and then even after we were given our few minutes to speak, he was given the last word, he was given the last response, and then even after the meeting was over, he was able to spend his time to go up and hobnob with the staff to secure his standing on this. We ask you to reject this meeting, or this rezoning. The last time I've been involved in a process like this was specifically about the changes in the zoning. When we dialed into the meeting and saw the developer give his presentation, we were also surprised to realize that there are several variances that were being granted by the city staff for this property. When we brought up our opposition in the community development meetings, or in the community outreach meetings, those were never brought up that there was variances going to be had on this property. In fact, when we tried to work with the developer and his attorney to say, "Look, there's other ways that this could go that would be less impactful to us," he said, "No, no, no, that would require variance, and there's no way that we can go even in a request for that." But never at any time in any of the outreach meetings was the truth ever brought up that, "No, no, no, we're going to get variances to smash these things in tighter and closer so that we don't have to conform to the setbacks and get more units into this property and be a little bit more obtrusive to your street, to your community there." You're going to hear a lot of other reasons to reject this. Once you approve this, it's just too late. Why? Why can't the Planning and Zoning Board, why can't the city council say, "Hold on, let's stop this thing. Let's really look at these concerns that have been raised by these citizens, because they're legitimate. Let's run them down, let's run them to ground, let's see if they're real, let's see if there's a way that we can work this out," instead of just ramming this down our throats. We're willing to work with the staff, we're willing to work with the developer, but everything that we've brought up has been blatantly disregarded as nonsense, and we need to have our voices heard. We've brought up legitimate concerns that need to be investigated. I plead with you to reject this rezoning, and at a minimum, let's put it back on planning and zoning, let's put it back, and let's come to the ground of it all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Yes, Ms. Mickelson, who's the next speaker?
Next speaker is Kay Scott.
Welcome, Kay. I'm not sure we can hear you, but would you please say something so we know you're there?
Hello?
Yes, hello, is this Kay Scott?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Hi, Kay, you are on the Mesa City Council meeting. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for letting us voice our opposition to this project. I have been asked by my neighbors to help voice along with Mr. Kennedy and others part of our concerns. My, we have 100% of the neighbors here who are in opposition to this project. I would like them so you know that we are real people. The Seashans, the Harbertons, the Browns, the Beedys, two families of Kennedys, three families of Uries, the Cuttons and the Buzzbees, along with my husband and I, the Scots, have we are 100% opposed to this proposed condominium project. My family and I have lived on Recor Road for over 20 years, and like Russell said, we are also longtime Mesa residents. All seven of our children graduated from Mesa High, and most of them still live in Mesa and are raising their children here in the city as well. And with this large family, we worked really hard to find a place with a little acreage that was still in the city. So, we were thrilled 20 years ago, or 21 years ago, when we found Recor Road. We live with around like-minded people who enjoy having a little elbow room. In fact, most of our neighbors come from families who have been citizens for Mesa for decades as well, with the Brown family having been here for seven generations and a long service record of city service as well. But the biggest joy of living on this street is the community we've built with our neighbors. We have all put in time and effort to become well-appointed. We have each other's backs, we watch each other's children, we bring real since people are safe or distressed, and we do errands for each other. We enjoy spending time together. We do these things because we know each other, and we know when things are happening in people's lives, both bad and good, so we celebrate and grieve together. And in a world where most people don't even know their neighbors, we have made the effort to do so here, and we are all enriched because of it. And I state again, that 100% of us are opposed to this project. It makes no sense to us to put a multifamily project in the middle of an established neighborhood of acre lots. It doesn't match our rural, but still in the city lifestyle that we all sought out and found here on our one-of-a-kind street. We enter our neighborhood off of busy Baseline Road, which deadens the freeway, so our half-mile neighborhood is kind of unique. We've heard it's one-of-a-kind in the city. That's really part of its charm, so why would you take that away? The only really negative of living here is how busy Baseline Road is, and we who live here experience that busyness on a daily basis. In fact, even in the summer, it often takes several minutes of waiting to safely make a left-hand turn from Recor onto Baseline. That's when schools are closed and winter visitors aren't here, and this year with COVID. Our neighbors who are parents of teenagers will not let their young drivers turn left onto Baseline even now. It makes them turn right and go up and flip a U because it's unsafe to do so. So, it's really naive to think that 76 more housing units won't cause more wait lines, more wait times, and more traffic frustration, and cars lining up to turn onto Recor from Baseline, and cars lining up on our street as people are waiting to turn onto Baseline, especially at rush hours. There is only one way in and one way out of our neighborhood. If the worst happens and an accident does occur, with this intersection blocked, people will not be able to come in or go out. We would literally be blocked from accessing our homes, and that would be nightmarish. There are already so many apartments and high-density housing projects along the Mesa Side Baseline, from Greenfield to Ellsworth Road, that people have nicknamed it the condo corridor. We cannot imagine that one more such project is needed, especially one that does nothing to match the neighborhood it is trying to force itself upon. Every family here came to this street for the acreage and the room, and we understand that some people like to live in contexts like those proposed, but for people who don't and actively search for something different, it is a bitter pill to have it forced upon us. Also, most every one of us have consulted with realtors to give a sense of what this proposed condo project would do to our property values, and we have all been told by different realtors that our values will take a significant hit as this project goes through. Mr. Pew, the attorney for the opposition, even agreed in our last neighborhood meeting that our property values would go down. It just adds insult to injury because we feel we don't have any control over this final decision. You know, my husband and I sold and moved from our previous home because multifamily housing was built close by, and it was also units that people purchased. We were told the same thing then that we are hearing now, that the project would be upscale and nice and attract quality neighbors. And honestly, the first owners were nice and added positive aspects to our neighborhood. They seemed to be worth the increased traffic and the neighborhood congestion and the partial blocking of our sunset views. Within two years, however, almost all of the original owners had sold or were renting out their homes, and the next round of neighbors were very different. They brought drugs and crime and public altercations that resulted in police being called off, with the police helicopter flying over at night on a regular basis. Landscaping and yard upkeep decreased substantially. The common areas became choked with trash. This project that was touted to be upscale and nice went from new to nightmarish in two to three years. It was a classic case of the wrong project being built in a neighborhood of single-family homes, resulting in much urban decay. That neighborhood is even worse now, and it breaks my heart to see it when I drive by that area. So, this situation that we are currently in feels like deja vu to me, and we know the probability of the same thing happening here is great. Statistics show that condo ownership is rarely long-term, with high turnover rates with owners and others buying as an investment still with renters or to use as an Airbnb. This project most certainly would decline nightmarish in a few short years. We all understand that Recor and Baseline is prime property and will be developed someday, and we are not opposed to business or offices or assisted-living homes or something of that nature going in. We also absolutely do understand that there is a place for high-density, multi-story housing, but it does not make sense to approve it in a neighborhood of acre lots. We hope that you realize we are just people, people who have worked hard, paid taxes, and lived and attended schools in Mesa and are loyal citizens of our city. I hope that you take from my comments that our neighborhood has a personality, and consider, if you will, just for a moment, where you live. Picture in your home, picture in your mind your home and your neighborhood. Even close your eyes for a moment if that helps you, and then imagine a multifamily project being built right next door to you, not the street over, not close by, but right next door. Imagine the nice, single-family home next door to you being destroyed so that this project can be built right next door to you. This project would affect your very quality of life, from your peace and safety and sense of neighborhoods to your privacy and your home value and the traffic on your tiny streets. Would you approve a project like that right next door to you? This proposed project will affect all of us on Recor Road just as negatively as the nightmare you are imagining. I have heard my entire life that one thing we need to stand up for and protect with all of our might is the sanctity and safety of our homes. We 100% of the Recor Road homeowners literally pray that if you would not approve a project like this next door to you, can you in good conscience approve it going in next door to me and my neighbors? It is beyond frustrating to all of us that a wealthy developer from Canada might be granted so much power to change the lives of so many longtime Mesa residents, and we unitedly 100% urge you to vote no on this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Ms. Mickelson, do we have any other individuals that would like to speak over the phone?
No additional speakers on the phone, Mayor, just one additional speaker who wanted her comments read into the record.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Sure. Misty Brown says, "Another comment card, another virtual meeting that feels very impersonal. Again, I am 100% opposed to this project and even more opposed to the entrance exit on Recor Road. This is a huge concern for all the residents and is going to cause a cluster of accidents, wait times to exit, and an additional 140 drivers on this dead-end street. We don't see how it can possibly make any sense. Please consider the residents on this street when considering this proposal instead of just a business deal for the city. We also question the so-called traffic study done by the opposition. With DPS and ADOT stations at the end of our street, has anyone reached out to them? They are just as concerned about this project as the residents." Thank you. Those are all the comment cards submitted, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mickelson.
Mayor, just a reminder, we do have staff presentation if council would like.
Yes, thank you. I know the applicant is also on the line, Mr. Pew, are you there?
Hello, Mayor. I am here and available to make a presentation. We could do that, or it could be shorter perhaps if we heard from the staff first, if you want to, and then I can finish quicker.
Okay, thank you. That sounds quick, sounds good. Why don't we go ahead, city staff, why don't you give us a brief summary of this zoning case?
And Mayor, can I just clarify, there was a comment made about staff and the applicant. Let me just be clear that the staff makes their recommendation before the Planning and Zoning Committee, so there wouldn't be any influence by the applicant at that time during the presentation. So, there was maybe some suggestion that there might have been some undue influence, but the staff is independent and makes their recommendation prior, even weeks before it shows up on the, before it gets posted on the Planning and Zoning Agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Someone from staff ready to give us a little presentation on this case?
Not as here, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, what are you looking at right now? This is the site that's actually located at the northeast corner of Baseline and Recor. And you're looking at the zoning designation, the current zoning- And you're looking at the zoning designation, the current zoning designation is agriculture. And as you can see right across the street is AT Steel. And also on the southern part of the property, across the street from baseline is the town of Gilbert. And if you look at the zoning designation is right in the town of Gilbert, it's all zoned industrial, commercial, or is zoned for commercial uses. So this is a critical part that I staff based our recommendation on. The general plan designation is neighborhood suburban. And the, that character designation is actually intended to provide variety of housing, that's the goal of the character designation. And it also encourages high density to be developed along arterial road frontages. So that's really critical as we were doing our analysis or reviewing the project. And also that kind of zoning or the location of the property based on the general plan character designation is for these arterial frontages to always serve as kind of a transition to your lower density. So you want to put your higher density in front of those high-traffic areas and then it will serve as a buffer to the community. So the proposed request, again, is from agriculture to residential medium too. And also the residential medium too, if you look at the neighborhood suburban character designation is a primary use. And what that means is those are specifically intended to be the zoning designation for that character designation. This is a site plan that was presented by the applicant and the site plan shows 76 units that is going to go on to the site. And overall, we have 15 buildings. It's very critical that if you look at the site plan, there's so many amenities that they are providing, so there was a discussion about variances. Basically, what they are requesting is a plan area development overlay. And the PAD, it's intended for innovative design where you have a site that is basically developing to really create that kind of innovative design that we encourage. So as a mitigation for some of the creative designs that they are proposing, they are asking for certain modifications. And the modification specifically pertains to the landscaping along baseline and wrecker. So what they are asking for is reduction of the overall landscaping that would have been required. And in addition to the reduction, or as a mitigation to the reduction, they are proposing to increase the planting materials that would have been required or that is required along baseline and wrecker. And they are also proposing a perimeter fence, well-designed perimeter fence to clearly distinguish the boundaries of the site. And then on the eastern part, right next to a light industrial zoning designation, they are also asking for reduction. If you look on the northern side, that is the one adjacent to the single-family homes, there is no request to modify any of the setbacks. They're actually providing more landscaping plantings along the site. And also as part of the mitigation, they are providing all the amenities. So the amenities in the development will consist of a swimming pool, ramada, fireplace, a barbecue area, which is not required. And in addition to that, they are also providing more private open spaces way beyond what is required in the code. So overall, they are proposers of higher quality, which is what we always promote. Look at whenever we are reviewing a project that is requesting for a plan area overlay. And then I'll pass the rest on to Eric and I'll come back to finish the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Councils, this is Eric Gudarian. And the Deputy Transportation Director, just want to highlight some traffic items around the site. So the City of Mesa Transportation Staff has been a part of the review during this time. Baseline Road is owned and maintained by the town of Gilbert. Around this site where wrecker road continues to the south into Gilbert, there's a traffic signal. And then approximately 1,200 feet to the east of wrecker road where this proposed site is located is the Meadows Traffic Signal on Baseline Road. So as I mentioned, staff has, has reviewed this, we've reviewed the, the traffic memorandums that were included. Unfortunately, there, this whole year with, with COVID, we haven't been able to go out and take traffic counts because traffic volumes have fluctuated so much and gone down. But what we've reviewed, the, the traffic consultant has used the state of the practice as far as generating or estimating the, the number of trips that, that would happen, both with the existing development and the proposed development. We look at level of service, which really looks at the, the level of delay, an average delay that, that each vehicle turning onto baseline road would have, understanding that 70, 76 units is going to increase the traffic on wrecker road, but, but the delay with the analysis shows that, that it doesn't go up significantly because of the, the lower volumes that are on wrecker road today. So there, with this analysis, there weren't any requirements that, that we could place on this development to mitigate the traffic.
Mayor, this, this, what you're looking at right now is also the elevations that were submitted with the development. As you can see, this is of higher quality, they meet all the city's high-quality development standards, they are showing different building materials, breaks in elevation, landscaping that basically meets the goals of quality development in the city. Again, you're looking at some of the elevations as well that was provided, looking at the main entrance to the development. And I've already explained the modifications that were being actually requested. The applicant also conducted two citizen participation meetings and from the report that we received, the, some of the major concerns that were discussed had to do with traffic, devaluation of properties, loss of neighborhood fill, which has been answered in terms of the traffic. So based on the application, all the information and staff review, the proposal complies with the 2040 Mesa General Plan. It meets the criteria for development review, for quality development and site plan review. And the Planning and Zoning Board reviewed this and recommended a three to two vote. Those two members have voted against it, expressed concerns with the traffic that was going to be generated from the development. So with this staff recommends approval with conditions of approval and we will stand for any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Council, well, before we proceed, Mr. Pugh, Mr. Pugh, would you like to go now or would you like to go after council asks questions of our, our staff?
Either way, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me now?
We can. Why don't you stand by, Mr. Pugh. Council, before we go to Mr. Pugh, are there any questions for our, our planning staff? Mr. Freeman?
Mayor, I just propose we wait till Mr. Pugh, I have some questions and concerns. So I'll, I'll wait till then after he's done.
Thank you. All right, before we proceed, Mr. Pugh, any other comments for, for staff? Okay, thank you, Mr. Pugh. What can you tell us about this case?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask our Planning Director, Dr. Apia, to please fast forward through that PowerPoint, he has control of it, and go to the Neighborhood Outreach section. There's a slide that indicates that and we'll take it from there. So, Mr. Mayor and Council members, if I could simply summarize and say that the presentation by the Planning Director and by our traffic staff, we concur with everything that was mentioned. This property conforms to the general plan, it is a primary zoning district, and all the issues mentioned with respect to the PAD, the one thing to remember is that on the northern boundary of this property, we have not asked for any deviations and in fact, we have increased the building setbacks, we have increased the landscaping, and we have oriented the buildings in such a way that they face sideways onto that northern boundary and so that the visual penetration into the neighborhood to the north is, is very, very minimal, if at all. The other thing I'd like to just quickly mention, was mentioned by one of the speakers that I had said in a meeting that this project would clearly devalue the neighborhood's property values and that, that is not anything that I said. My, my comment with respect to property values is that it's always a speculative and confusing topic. Everyone, all of us think we know what affects property values and in reality, it's the comparable sales. And so I would not have made a statement of that nature. They will be evaluated and I think we all know the uncertainty of, of how property values are determined. I would like to also now move on, I think many of the neighborhood questions about sewer and right-of-way have all been dealt with, so if I could go to the next slide, Nana, that would be, this wasn't talked about, this is the narrow nature of the property on baseline, it's only 390 feet wide and consequently, access on baseline is not possible because the distance from wrecker road on the west to the access point of the industrial project on our east is barely 400 feet. And you have to have 300 feet of separation in order to have a separate access point on baseline and there is a median in baseline. So none of the traffic departments, Mesa or Gilbert, recommend or are interested in an access on baseline and that was one of the questions. That's why we have the main entrance on wrecker, in fact, the only entrance. Okay, next slide. I think the traffic engineer for Mesa addressed this topic very well. There is no warrant for a signal at this location, the traffic is so minimal on wrecker road that these 76 townhomes will not contribute significantly and certainly will not add any traffic that would require or even come close to requiring a traffic signal. Next slide. Okay, we, we've been through this and also talked about the minor delays that could be caused, but we're not talking minutes and minutes, but rather seconds, if any. Okay, next slide. We've already discussed those, next slide. This is a good example, Mayor and Council members, of the setback, the left-hand portion of this exhibit in the lower left demonstrates the distance from the buildings on the north end to the property line. They varied from 30 feet to 62 feet. And then from that property line to the nearest home is another 60 feet approximately. So we have done all we can, separate our use from the single-family use to the north and quite frankly, Mayor and Council members, that's why we have a zoning code. The zoning code describes the methodology and the separation requirements when a multifamily zoning district adjoins a single-family district. And in this case, we meet and/or exceed every one of those dimensional requirements. Next slide. The next slide. Okay, before we get to the design concept, I just want to summarize too that we, here's the real question, I think, Mayor and Council members, this is a small property on the corner of baseline and wrecker, five and a half net acres. So what would the right use be here? Do we really think that someone's going to build a single-family home or homes on baseline on a five-acre parcel? There are no single-family homes on baseline road from Power to Higley on the Mesa side of the street. This is not a good location for single families. So if not that, then what? Well, some suggested a medical office or a commercial retail use. Well, first of all, if there were demand for offices, which given what's happened this year with COVID, demand for office space is diminishing quickly, parking and traffic for both medical offices and commercial would be significantly more than what would be generated from 76 townhomes. So we believe this product diversifies what's in the area. These are not apartments, these are for-sale units, very attractively designed with patios over each of the decks and have been very, very popular. Next slide. Okay, that's the entrance, next slide. This is a, this is the slide, Mayor and Council members, depicting the northern boundary. And we always get criticized for putting trees in there that are larger than they are when they're planted. But these trees are a combination of, a combination of eucalyptus and cissow and at maturity will reach somewhere from 40 to 60 feet. And the, again, the buildings are set back from 30 to 60 feet facing sideways with no second-story windows looking out to the north. There are transom windows about eight and a half feet up in there, but those are just to let light into the structure, not as a window on the second floor. Next slide. This is one of the popular features of the townhome project that's been very successful with this patio on the deck over the garage. So Mayor and Council, we, we urge your support of this case. When you think about a property that is adjacent to the University AT Steel, adjacent to light industrial, open repair shops and assembly and all of that to the east and then all of the land on the south side, Gilbert had, in the general plan, has long-range visions for commercial and business park. So this really is consistent with the area and it is a different density and a different use than our neighbors, that's for sure. But when you realize we're out on the baseline frontage, this is a good use and diversifies the housing product like the general plan calls for in this area. So with that, Mayor and Council members, we urge your support of this case.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Council, discussion or questions for the applicant? Mr. Freeman, have you indicated you had some questions?
I did, Mayor, thank you. Hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
You know, I drove out there this past week and drove the street and it reminded me of what some of the characteristics of our community used to be like. And obviously, that area was a citrus farmland and the neighborhood, the neighbors there are trying to preserve their historical component there. And, and I see that, it's not a very busy street. You have ADOT to the north end, under the freeway, has a maintenance yard there and another business at the very end by the canal there. But other than that, you have homeowners and I, you know, I, I look at this and say, how can we ever keep some of the characteristics of our neighborhoods, residential or our 43 properties? And I get it, our staff is recommending, pushing or recommending the development for this size of property, 76 townhomes, I think is, is extremely high for the area. But staff never talked about maintaining the characteristics of the neighborhood and I don't think the developer did as well. And, and are we meeting the needs of the residents as a city and as a council? And I, I don't think we are. You know, I, I went out there and I looked at the stoplights, if you were to turn, approach southbound on wrecker, and if you want to make a left-hand turn onto baseline, you have to go over four lanes of traffic. And Eric and others say, well, that's not a big deal, you can just wait. However, there's two stoplights to the, to the west and some to the east. And, you know, I, I feel there's a big safety concern there, somebody's going to get T-boned and hurt. Somebody's going to get T-boned and hurt. You know, someone said that no one's willing to build on a 5-acre development. Well, I disagree with that. There are a lot of people in the community. You know, this development company bought the property to develop how they so wish. I recognize that. But to say no one would want to build and keep it residential, I think, is not an accurate statement. So, you know, with that, there's some other, I see some of the concerns. The other thing I'm concerned about is the college to the west of the project. We don't really have an assurance that there might be some egress and ingress off of Wrecker Road to future development to the college to the west. And so there, again, when that comes to council in the future, if it ever does, well, it will, that they may want access from the college onto Wrecker Road. And that could happen unless Nana corrects me and says that cannot happen. But with that, I won't be supporting this project. I don't think it maintains the characteristics, even though it meets the general plan. I think we need to protect our residents the best we can. And, you know, if the developer really wants to work with the neighborhood, they could lower the density. Do they need 76 units there? What about 35, 40? So with that, Mayor, I'll end my discussion here and maybe add some more as we go on. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Council, other discussion on this item? Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Freeman. I appreciate your input. I actually really do like that development. I think it's a well-planned. For many years, I know, we had worked on the general plan, and it happened right before, during when I was on city councils. I've been on city council since 2013. And these are the ideas that we have been striving for, to really build the characteristic or the character of our community. And so the general plan really does speak to that. This kind of development is exactly what we need in that area. So I'm going to be in support of it. I think it's a well-laid plan. I think it's, you know, I've heard issues related to, well, you know, there's 76 units there, there's going to create a lot of traffic. But we have to remember, they're not all going to come out at the same time. They're going to come out sporadically. There may be traffic issues, you know. I trust Eric and his recommendation that city staff has said, you know, it's not going to be a problem, but maybe in the future it might be, but it's something that currently is not going to be a problem. So I'm actually supportive of the project. I think it's a great project. It's going to complement what's just down the street. I know that they have a complementary project that's located there. So, and it's top-quality. There are high-end townhouses. And so I will be in support of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Council, other comments or questions? Councilmember Duff.
Thank you. I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to express my support for the project. I have looked at it in great detail. It is in accordance to our general plan to have high density along this. Among any high-density housing, this is the most desirable. We have townhomes that are for ownership, and it's upscale. So I think it is the most desirable. I think it meets the compatibility of the neighborhood, is transitions into a neighborhood. So you have high-density own neighborhood, transitioning into the others. And then we have, it's, I think, a compatible use to an expanding university that we have to the west. So given all the guidelines that we have in our general plan and in our planning and zoning, I think it does meet them. And I realize that it is difficult as a resident to see neighborhoods change. It is part of living in the city. I live in a single-family neighborhood. I, it's nicer homes. On my back fence, I have apartments, and I'm fine with that. And it hasn't affected the property values. It is a compatible use of where I live. And I think we have to look at high density a little bit differently, especially now with housing demand and people wanting smaller spaces, but not wanting to give up that quality. And I think this is an excellent example of that. I wish we had more in our high-density housing that was at this quality, that we had options of quality housing and small spaces for sale, especially. So I am in support of this project. And I understand the neighbors, it's part of a growing city. I think it will be more compatible than commercial. Commercial will have more traffic. And as far as the desirability of your neighborhood to have residential next to residential is more desirable as far as your property value or desirability than to have a commercial use, which can have a number of problems. So I think it's highest and best use of the property, and I am supportive.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff. Councilmember Heredia.
Hey, Nana, I see the, the, it passed planning zoning 3-2. What were the concerns of the members that voted against this? I'm trying to see in the notes, but do you have the information as far as the folks that voted against this?
Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, the two board members that voted against it were not convinced with a traffic study or the preliminary traffic study. They thought there was still going to be substantial amount of traffic. Actually, they were concerned that the people will have to wait 60 seconds at the intersection. So that was some of the discussions that came up at the PNC hearing.
Okay, thank you. Council, any other discussion on this item?
Mayor, I think Mr. Thompson raised his hand.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try not to cough during all this. I got a cold, that's why I'm not on video. I probably don't look all that great. You know, as a council, we've dealt with and worked through some very difficult zoning projects over the years. And I remember one of the very first ones that I had was a, was the Jeep dealership over office superstition and auto loop drive, very contentious with the neighbors. But I'm reminded by what Councilmember Richen said at the time. And he said that, you know, your property rights end at the end of your property. And to think that you buy next to a vacant lot and that that vacant lot will never be developed is not a great way to think. And that, but I'm also reminded that we have, you know, we have a planning and zoning committee. We have a planning and zoning department. And we have a process that everyone goes through, every single developer goes through to ensure that the projects are being looked at, they're being vetted, they're being scrutinized. You know, if the neighbors are upset with it, the neighbors have an opportunity to speak with planning and zoning to work through these processes. I do agree somewhat with Councilmember Freeman, the characteristics. I think as a council, we really should be looking at the characteristics of our community and how we want our community to develop as we go along. But I'll support this project because it meets the intent of the general plan, and that's something that's voted on by the voters. And the voters tell us that that's what they want to see there, and it meets the intent. And so I will be supporting this project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I'll weigh in as well. Let me begin by saying that I very much understand and appreciate the concerns of this neighborhood. I've been to this neighborhood as well, and it's a remarkable place to live. I understand why you love your neighborhood. It's a beautiful enclave of large, beautiful homes on large properties and very much a rural atmosphere. Reminds me of Lehigh, of Mr. Freeman's neck of the woods. And we all know how passionate people are about the quality of life that they enjoy and that kind of a rural enclave in the middle of an urban city. So I'm envious of your beautiful neighborhood, and I understand why you're very passionate about wanting to protect it. And I know that as, you know, the development is, and people have encroached on your way of life there, that it's been a cause of concern. I recall back when AT Steel started building next to you, that there were concerns that were expressed. And it's evident to me that AT Steel is not done expanding. And so, you know, the intersection of baseline and Wrecker has gone from being a quiet, shady rural area to really a very, I don't need to tell you, a very, very busy arterial streets. And so, but so we need, that's not to say that we need to abandon this neighborhood, but just the opposite. We do need to do all we can to preserve, as Mr. Freeman suggests, the high quality of life that these folks enjoy there. And I think the city planning attempt to do that is the buffer that's being suggested. And so the question is, what's the best buffer? Would it be some sort of commercial or industrial use, some sort of retail use? City staff is telling us now that a more, a kinder, gentler, more appropriate buffer for this type of residential would be a more high-density residential. And again, the point is that along these busy arterial frontages, we really couldn't expect to have single-family homes, nor would they be appropriate. So I think a transitional buffer of this higher-density housing is not something that is inconsistent with trying to protect the more rural, low-density housing further to the north. I appreciate Mr. Kennedy's concerns that perhaps there were variances that were given that are not sensitive to the protecting the views into his neighborhood. And I think staff and Mr. Pugh addressed that. And as I look at the way the homes are configured, it's clear to me that there was some sensitivity that was used in the way the project was designed to prevent just that. It sounds like, you know, the large trees that are being planted along with, again, the way the buildings are configured will, to the extent possible, preserve the privacy of the neighborhood. My impression is that really, and if I lived in this neighborhood, I would be very skeptical of city staff's conclusion that traffic is not going to be severely impacted. 76 units is probably twice that many cars exiting and leaving this neighborhood every day, and I could, I get it. I think that's, I understand why you're concerned that that's going to add to the difficulty getting off of rural. But I also understand what the material that was presented earlier, which is that unfortunately, this piece of property is just too narrow to allow for an entrance on baseline. And it's also too narrow to allow for a traffic signal to go in that close to the other signals. Now, potentially, when AT Steel develops the rest of its property on rural and there is higher traffic numbers, maybe at that point, we can make an exception and petition the town of Gilbert to put in a traffic signal there. Again, it's out of our hands, I'm afraid, because Gilbert owns and operates the baseline at that area, and it's not something that the city of Mesa has the prerogative of installing a traffic light there. But, long story short, I am going to support this project, but it's not out of a lack of empathy for this neighborhood. I want you to know that I understand your concerns, but I think, in all honesty, that this project is going to be a good buffer for your lifestyle. And I can't prevent development from encroaching on your rural lifestyle, but I think this is the best that we can do to mitigate against the impact that is coming with development. So I will be supporting, I'll be voting in favor of the project. Council, are there other comments or questions? Mr. Freeman.
Yes, Mayor, I ask the question, could Nana or Eric, will there be in the future any exit if AT Steel were to develop to have a right-of-way onto Wrecker Road?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Freeman, this is Eric. I don't know of any right now, but that will be determined when they come in for a site plan. I haven't seen any sort of access onto Old Wrecker Road. Yeah, my guess is they'll use the Sunview entrance.
That doesn't really answer my question, but any plausible reason why they could not use that in the future?
So, Vice Mayor, are you asking, do they have the right to come out onto that road?
Correct. Is there any easements or right-of-way or for AT Steel to come out onto Old Wrecker?
No, they're, sorry, Vice Mayor. Mayor, I don't know, there's no non-vehicular access easement onto Wrecker Road that I know of.
We're not aware of any that it currently exists that would suggest that at some future development phase of AT Steel, they would be coming that direction. I think most likely, if they were to come to us today, we would recommend that they circulate within their campus like they do today and come back out on, is it Sun?
Sunview.
Sunview.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Freeman, I hope I didn't add to the confusion. I guess my point was, I think AT Steel is going to continue to develop, and it wouldn't surprise me if that poured some traffic onto Wrecker. But I stand corrected if staff is saying that that's not likely to happen. All right, Council, any other comments before we proceed? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve this item? Thank you, Councilmember Duff, seconded by Councilmember Luna. We'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker is absent. Councilmember Heredia.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you. I vote aye as well. So the motion passes five ayes with one nay with Mr. Freeman and Mr. Whitaker absent. That concludes the items, I'm sorry. We do have one additional item on our agenda for this meeting. That's item eight, items from citizens present. Ms. Mickelson, do we have any requests to speak?
We have one request, Mayor, from Taylor Earl, and he's on the phone to comment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Earl. You have three minutes. Please proceed. Ms. Mickelson, or anyone, maybe Channel 11? Do we know if Mr. Earl is still on the line?
Can you hear me?
Oh, there he is, Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Earl, please go ahead. You have, welcome to the city council meeting. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Sorry for the mix-up there with the unmuting. Mayor and council, my name is Taylor Earl. I'm with the law firm of Earl &amp; Curly. Normally, I would be in front of you sentencing a funny case, but tonight, I'm here just to say thank you. As some of you may know, my father, Stephen Earl, recently and suddenly passed away. A few weeks, at 72nd. My father had been a mainstay in the zoning community in East Valley in particular for over 30 years. During that time, he represented numerous zoning cases in the city of Mesa. As a family, at its passing, we were understandably heartbroken, but grateful for so many years together. I was personally grateful for so many years of practicing law together, ultimately becoming law partners. It was one of the great honors of my life. My father was very proud of his work in the city of Mesa. He worked on wonderful projects and valuable collaborations in the city. His work to help build the community meant so much to him throughout his life. But I recognize that none of that could have happened without the work of many individuals in Mesa. But tonight, Mayor and council, please let me say thank you. First, thank you to the members of the city council, both past and present, for your engagement and leadership on those many cases you worked on. engagement and leadership on those many cases you worked on. Thank you to the members of the planning and zoning board and the design review board, both past and present, for your detailed analysis, thoughtful questions and comments, and for pushing his project to be better. And thank you to the many wonderful city employees, the city managers, city attorneys, directors, planners, and everyone else over the years who collaborated with him to turn good projects into great projects. Countless hours of meetings, on emails, and phone calls. Thank you for helping to make my father's career more than just a job, but one of his great life's purposes, to bring good development to the valley, including Mesa, and to do so with integrity, professionalism, and a little humor. But thank you on behalf of my family, my firm, and myself. I want you to know that your contributions matter and that they are deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. If the agenda allowed, I'm sure we would all add to your, to the very positive things you said about your father. He was one of the most admired members of his profession that I know of anywhere in any practice. So your family's loss and your professional loss is certainly felt by many of us here at the city of Mesa. That concludes the agenda items on this agenda. Council, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Freeman. We'll do this with a voice vote, so please unmute your microphones. All in favor of adjourning this meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned.